All right, we are returning to reconvening into open session. The council gave staff direction during closed session. And so we are now reconvening the meeting at 5:02. As your mayor pro tem, our mayor is currently in Porterville, but will join us via Zoom momentarily. So as we wait for him to join us, let us pledge the, do the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Cruz, would you lead us?
Sure. Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, could you please do the roll call?
Mayor Mark Plummer is absent right now. Mayor Pro Tem Segersham?
Here.
Councilmember Cruz?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Merrill?
Here.
May we have your report on the agenda posting?
At 10:15 a.m. on the 30th day of September 2022, the agenda for the City of Sonora Council meeting scheduled for today's date was posted in the window of City Hall for public view.
Is there approval from the council? May I have a motion to approve or any comments to the?
I will move to approve the agenda.
Okay, council members Merrill and Hawkins? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you say aye?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, you need to grow.
Oh, okay, there he is. Okay, Councilmember Plummer, what happened? Sorry. Did you say yes too? Oh, he's frozen. Or he's just rolling his eyes. Is he, oh yeah, no, he's not.
His network bandwidth is low. You don't say.
May we move ahead?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, and on the agenda is presentations, and we look forward to hearing from our district supervisor,
Good evening, council members. It's been a while, right? We, it was a holiday period which joined up with a board of supervisors meeting that we went rather long. And then I think you had a lack of a quorum on your last meeting. So glad to be back here and addressing you again. So some areas from the county perspective. Goodness, there's been a lot going on. Fire safety advisory committee. So we've been working on the vegetation management ordinance, and we were moving right along, and then there became some concern on the part of county council. So we, we held back on it. We're still moving forward. I believe that we're going to bring it back to our board on December 6th, our meeting then. And hopefully that'll be a new first reading because we, we had a previous first reading, but never got to the second. So, and Chief New back here continues to, you know, be very, very helpful in, in working through, you know, this whole process. On the fireside too, we had our assistant county fire chief, Andy Murphy, that retired. So good luck to Andy. And now we have Mark DeTulio, is the new Andy. And so Mark is on board, he's doing a lot of stuff, but I would like to specifically, you know, put some compliments to Andy because before he left, he submitted for a grant through the federal government called the Safer Grant and secured $9 million for the county on the Toolumee County Fire Department. So kudos to Andy, thank you so much for doing that. Other issues, homelessness, always, always a concern. There's been a lot of discussion about the Jamestown High School roadside. We're still in, you know, more detailed, you know, taking a look at that. There was a Union Democrat article, you know, this past, I think it was on Saturday where our C O Tracy Riggs, you know, spoke about it. We're, we're constantly looking for properties, and I know this, you know, this city has been as well, that might be applicable to dealing with the homelessness issue. Where, you know, this could, you know, be purchase of some homes that have multiple bedrooms or possibly a hotel motel, you know, type of acquisition. And we're still very much looking at the Jamestown side itself and, you know, how we proceed, you know, with that. Sales tax measure, yep, city, you don't see the, your flyer here, Measure Y, general sales tax. And I wish, you know, the city all their best in moving forward with that. As everybody, I believe, is aware, the county has our Measure X, which is a special sales tax. And so that's dedicated funds. A tougher, tougher road to go down, right? You know, it requires two thirds plus a vote. You know, so it, looking at 40% to the sheriff, 40% to fire, and 20% to roads. And we're still moving forward with that. You know, I'm, I kind of get in an awkward position here. So as an elected official, I can't openly, you know, promote such measures other than to state the facts. And so those are pretty well the facts, and I'm really hoping that our business community and, and perhaps other organizations get behind it, you know, as well, because it'll, it'll mean a lot to the county. County budget, you know, the county budget has not been this healthy in many, many years. You know, looking through, you know, some recent, you know, times where we took literally cuts of 45 people layoffs, and then the second year of 45 people layoffs, and we cut a lot of program areas. So the county budget process was concluded on September 30th, and it, we're healthy, a lot healthier than we've been in a long time. So I'm, I'm really glad to see about that. Big concern, you know, for me personally, is prudent spending and, and looking at sustainable, you know, funding to, you know, pay for the services that we're approving. Went to the Rural County Representatives of California, R C R C conference here recently, as well as the other supervisors did as, you know, joined, you know, me up there. It was actually in Napa. The, you know, when you, when you join in organizations like that in a statewide conference, looking at the rural counties specifically, and trying to get to both the governor and the legislature, you know, to support activities. And, and they've been having good successes. Hot ticket item, right? Climate Action Plan. Nobody's, I, I don't think people are unaware, you know, of that. There's been a lot of contentious discussions about the Climate Action Plan. I would really impress upon people that they look at the F A Qs that were put forth, you know, by Quincy Yeli in our Community Development Department. Quincy spent quite a bit of time, and I offered her some input. Climate action, you know, we, we had a board meeting, again, you know, on September 30th, and, and there was a lot of discussion about it. But it's, it's a positive thing, and I don't really see, quite honestly, the negative aspects because we're not forcing anybody to do anything, right? You know, they can still have their wood stoves, they can have their chainsaws, they can have their lawn mowers. Where this goes with the state, you know, remains to be seen. You know, the state could come down with additional actions that they require. But as right now, we're hoping to bring that back to the board by the first of the year, maybe sooner, you know, than that. You know, the, some of the supervisors will be meeting with staff and trying to, you know, work through some concerns. Other than that, I'm always interested in looking towards what we can do, you know, within the city. Very much want to keep moving forward on discussions about the dome and, and the historic courthouse. And so other than that, I will gladly take any questions.
Questions for Supervisor Goldenberg?
Yeah, I hadn't heard anything about the historic courthouse plans. Could you elaborate on what those look like?
So the historic courthouse, when the, all the current court functions moved up to the Long Justice Center, that left the building vacant. It's been vacant for quite some time now. And what we're looking at is how can we perhaps repurpose that building in any number of ways? So we can look at additional county departments. One of the thoughts was literally to bring the board of supervisors over there, and this may or may not occur. So we had what was called a space needs study that was conducted by the county. That study is all but done. It hasn't been released yet, but we're looking to see what we can do. And I have a personal interest, especially down on the ground level, you know, where there's a lot of potential public activity, you know, could we have a presence of the arts or other areas in that, in that section?
Real quick, would we be able, the city, to collect any tax money for the use of that?
I, that's a question I don't really have an answer for. I don't, I don't believe so, but, you know, I don't, I mean, that it's been county government for a long time, and I don't believe that there was a, a tax exchange in the further. Maybe, Melissa, if you could speak to that, or, yeah.
I, I just thought I'd shoot in the dark here.
Sure. Good try.
Dave, regarding the Climate Action Plan, there's been obviously a lot of pushback on it. With that, much of that is mandated, and I'm asking this question to play devil's advocate here a little bit. Much of that is mandated from the state of California to have a Climate Action Plan, to, to have those type of things, correct?
So it's really twofold, Matt, and, and thanks for asking. Part of it is, you know, the state was looking to have Climate Action Plan, but also part of our general plan. And, and this was voted on by, you know, previous supervisors. And I heard some supervisors get up and talk publicly about this, Randy Handbell being for one, you know, that they were really concerned about it, but they were the ones that voted it in. So, you know, I'm just putting that out there. It's, it's not that we really have a choice on this, is to make the best way moving forward.
It, it basically goes back, I know it goes back some years, and I remember this being talked about, that's why I'm asking these questions, because I've actually gotten, I don't know if the rest of the council has, but I've actually gotten more than probably five phone calls about this, wanting to know what's going on. I've tried to direct them to you, I know you've answered many of those questions, but kind of being the neutral party in that, I can answer some of that, and that's always my answer, you know, prior, prior boards put this out there, and then, you know, the state has been pushing a lot of this, regardless of how we feel, it's, the state is pushing a lot of this, so.
So, and, and granted, Matt, but let me take it a step further. It's the right thing to do, right? You know, there's, you know, my, my previous, you know, background in wildland firefighting with Cal Fire, 35 years, I saw all of these issues and how we would often be able to essentially pick up fires, what we would say, you know, during the evening and nighttime hours. And, and so that was based on, a lot of times, you know, recovery of humidity is a huge thing. And so we're seeing a lot now, you know, in recent years, these fires are burning where they're, they're literally sometimes taking out 20,000 acres in the nighttime, which was unheard of before. So trying to deal with those effects, but do, deal with them in a reasonable well way. So, anyway.
Yeah, so that, thank you.
I've spoken a bit on the Climate Action Plan before, and I just wanted to reiterate that I view it as, you know, regardless of, you know, the science behind it, to me, it's a dollars and cents thing. You know, we talk at the city level, there's plenty of deferred maintenance that's been happening, and when we talk about bills that either the city or the county has to pay in utilities, I don't see a downside in properly weatherizing our municipal buildings, at the very least, investing in, you know, ways to generate some of our own power to offset those costs. So that way, when, you know, we ask, say, hey, citizen of Toolumee County, citizen of Sonora, we'd like you to pay a little bit more in taxes, we can say, hey, less is going towards us paying our bills and more is going towards providing you with essential services. So I think that might be, in my opinion, I think it's an effective way to sell the public on the need for modernizing our public infrastructure.
And, and absolutely, Andy. I mean, there's so many ways, you know, that we can affect savings, you know, and solar is huge, you know, we have agreements, you know, with the B O R, Bureau of Regulation, you know, for power. But there's a lot more we could do in solar. So we get, we get power at half cost, or we could install some solar operations and get power at no cost, you know, so that's something to consider, for sure.
I was just curious, that Napa is a rural county?
So.
Considered an rural county, I, we are.
You know, and I, and I, I can't, I can't really say how they, they granted all of the counties. Napa is definitely more rural than many other counties, but it, it was a good location to go to.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, it's a great place for a conference.
Yeah.
So no other questions?
Any other questions that I can answer? Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next we have a presentation from Trinity Abila with Habitat for Humanity on the Home Repair Program.
Good evening, thank you for having me. So my name's Trinity Abila, I'm the CEO for Habitat for Humanity here in Toolumee County, and I'm just excited to be able to share with you a program that we have, so we can get the word out on how we're helping the community. So I know that you know that Habitat for Humanity, we're building homes, we're building Parrots Ferry Village, 35 homes currently in Columbia, but what you may not know is that we have a home repair program. So as we've been out and about into the community, we began to discover that we have an aging housing demographic. All of the housing here built both in Toolumee County as well as Sonora is, is 50, 60, 70, probably here in Sonora, over 100 to 200 years old, the buildings and the houses that people are living in. The problem that we're seeing is we have a lot of people who are currently aging in place, they're on a fixed income, a fixed budget, and so what has happened is they're unable to make necessary repairs, both to their home, as well as being able to make the necessary repairs for aging in place. So just to give a few examples, we've come into homes where there was a gentleman and his wife, he was a veteran, and the bathroom floor began to rot away. He was no longer able to make this repair, he put a small piece of wood over the rotted part of the floor, but he was really afraid that his wife and him were going to fall through the bathroom floor. They did not have enough income, they contacted contractors to come out and give a bid, and they did not make enough income to be able to repair the floor. So you can imagine their helplessness of what are they supposed to do to fix the floor? And that's where we come in. So we come in, we assess the, the damage to the floor, we assess the danger, and so we come in, and through our construction crews, we provide the, not only the repair, but we do it. It's a loan program, so our home repair program is a loan, it's a zero interest loan, and we only charge the recipients the actual cost of what it cost us to do that repair. So for example, for this family that we came in, this couple, we only, they had no labor because my construction crews came in, my staff came in to, and volunteers came to replace the floor, they only had to pay for the materials and the actual costs that Habitat spent. And what's really amazing about that is we have a lot of great resources and people who contribute to Habitat as far as vendors and stores, so we give them our cost. So for example, when we use Pennell's carpet and flooring, they give us a discounted rate because they believe in our mission, and therefore we turn that over, and we, we only charge them that discounted rate. So it's a zero interest loan, they're on a fixed income, what is their payment? So what happens is we end up spreading the payment out to anywhere from zero to 10 years, based upon the affordable, what they can afford. And so the average payment that people are making to Habitat to get their home repaired done can be anywhere from, we have one that is $6 a month, all the way up to maybe $32 a month. So we make sure that it's affordable, and not only is it affordable, what our recipients love about it is this is a pay it forward program. So 100% of the income, every time when they come in and they cut their checks to pay back Habitat for the repair, 100% of those funds are used to help the next person. And that's what's really dynamic about this program, is it being a pay it forward program, people are excited to not only receive help that they needed, but they're excited to know that they're going to help the next person who also needs a home repair. And so things that we do is repairing floors, we do a lot of ADA needs, we have people, again, aging in place, we take a lot of step in tubs and we convert them into showers so that people can walk into them, we do walk-in showers, we put ADA bars up, we build ADA ramps. We also have, when you're looking at our home repair program, we do have an aspect that we consider emergency repair. You would be shocked at the number of people currently living here in Toolumee County, and I'm going to include you guys in that when I say Toolumee County, that have no water. They have no water, they have no hot water because their hot water heaters are broken, they boil their water on their stove, they have no heat during the winter, so they're plugging everything in, and then what happens is they end up burning their, the outlets that they plug in, so they have electrical problems. So we have seen so much despair out there and hopelessness that we have decided that it was time to do something about it. And so to give people that hope to come in, that if, if you have an emergency, if you don't have water and you have an electrical or a plumbing or something that's going to cause you a hazard, we currently just built a ramp for a gentleman that is legally blind and was not able to leave his home. Imagine not being able to leave your home without assistance at all, and even with assistance, they were trying to get him down the stairs. So we're able to come in and make it easier, his home more accessible for him, so that he could again be able to have the hope and the dignity that Habitat provides. So currently, we serve 80% of the AMI and below for our program, so to qualify, as long as you're 80% of the AMI and below, you can qualify for the repair program. You need to be able to own your home, so this is a program for homeowners. It is not a program for renters, because unfortunately, here in Toolumee County, we have a lot of slum landlords, and we're not going to do repairs when they're charging such high rent. So they do need to be a homeowner. If they are a veteran though, and they are renting, we do make exceptions for veterans who have ADA needs if they're renting a home, to make the accommodations for them. But otherwise, they need to be a homeowner. As far as credit scores, it is a loan, so we process the loans in-house. And what we tell people is we're not looking for perfect, what we're looking for is making sure that, that it's a partnership and making sure that we believe that you're going to be able to remake the payment. The majority of people who come across our door that we do repairs for, they don't have perfect credit scores because typically they have outstanding medical bills. And here in Toolumee County, when you have a medical bill that's outstanding, whether you know this or not, it actually goes to a collection company, and you can make payments, but it does affect collections, and we don't feel that people should be punished because they can't be able to make their medical payments, or they're just making payments on it. So it is a fantastic program, we're excited, we've already done over 40 repairs, I've got another 25 at the office that are on the docket for us to go out there and make a difference. And repairs can range, like I said, from anything, sometimes we only come in and it's a couple hundred dollars that people need, and sometimes it can be thousands of dollars. And so how are we funding this? Good, I'm going to answer that question for you in case you were going to ask me. So currently, we were able to get a, we started up with seed money, we ourselves began to save seed money for this program to be able to help people, and Sonora Area Foundation matched our seed money. That's actually how we started. But we found out that was $60,000, and how many repairs were out there, we were not going to get very far. So we ended up applying for a grant, we received a grant of, for $200,000 to pour back into this community. And so we were excited, and we've gone after it, and we want to make sure to repair this aging demographic of homes here with the 200,000. But we didn't stop there, because we just reapplied again and got another $200,000 to pour back into the community. And guess what? We're not going to stop there. Every time we get the money, we reapply again, and this next time, we're looking at going for half a million dollars to pour back into this community. Because it's that important, that we, currently, there is no such thing as affordable housing. It doesn't exist, and there's now is no such thing as affordable rent. But we do need to take care of people in their current situation, in their current housing. We can't let the housing that we currently have dilapitate into nothing. And so this is a solution where we can partner with people and we can help people. So I'm just excited to be able to share that with you, and I could go on and on and share a million different great stories that we've seen in all the lives that we, we've gotten to change, but I want to respect your time, but you can always go on our website. And what I'm going to leave here for you, after you have, you have some questions, I'm going to leave for you our brochure. This is our home program brochure, I'll leave it here on the end, as well as my business card, but you can go onto our website, you can check out our program, and I'm always going to put a plug in, any chance I get, make sure you shop at our Restore, which is at the end of town, because it's things like our Restore that makes it possible for us to be able to have staff and for us to be able to just operate with Habitat for Humanity. We do not charge any staff fees for home repair, none. Currently, all of the staff, all of my construction staff that does the home repairs is completely paid for by the community. We're a community program built by the community, and so therefore, community support means everything to us. But this is really changing lives, we're excited to get that out to you, because we do, we know, I know, that you have some aging homes here and some homeowners that need some help, and so we may be able to step in and be able to help the homeowners, and in turn, really just beautify the city of Sonora. So, you have any questions?
I just have a comment. I, um, don't forget to mention that you, aside from shopping at Restore, you can also drop things off. I actually bought a house two years ago, and the previous owner had left probably 20 pieces of antiques there that I did not want, that I bequeathed to you guys. So, yeah, you can drop stuff off there, too.
And we do pickups. So at any time, you can call our store, we have the truck, and we will come out and we'll schedule a pickup, but it makes a difference, that's one way that you can give back so we can manage programs like this.
I was just going to ask how we could help you publicize the program, so thank you for the brochures and the card, and I'm sure Community Development will put them out, and, and certainly word of mouth. So, yeah, thank, thank you very much, and thank you for what you're doing for the community.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me. Anybody else? Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is public comment. Public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. Now, action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to. City staff are placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a three-minute presentation. If participating via Zoom, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature or dial star nine, star six to unmute. Sharon, would you like to come to the podium?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, the seventh woman since 1851 to serve. Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, the seventh woman since 1851 to serve on the city council. Suzanne is the eighth. I've put in front of each of you and Melissa, a copy of Historic Sonora from Gold Camp to Queen of the Southern Minds. I'm representing Tualamie Heritage Publications this evening. This is our fourth book. I'd like to note that Councilmember Sagerstrom is one of our board members. This is by Carlo M. De Ferre, who was the county historian for over 40 years and an acknowledged Gold Rush scholar. He focuses on the early, the founding era of Sonora, which has really never been totally explored. So this is kind of a first. And so he shows how a group of people came together, formed a governing board that morphed into city trustees and a city in 1851. There's chapters on medical services, what it was like when you were sick in 1849 here. Also, law enforcement, police, a chapter on vigilantes, the fire department, which was all volunteer for many, many years. Also, in the section on the grammar school, he talks about the racial integration of the grammar school in 1872. There's also chapters on the cemeteries in the city and the utilities. This book is hardcover. It has a dust jacket. And it has for its end papers, focusing on downtown Sonora in 1890. And these are the kind of maps that tell what was, each building was, a home, a business building and so on. Very informative. So I'd like to indicate that, oh, and by the way, there's 105 pictures in there. The books are at, for purchase at Mountain Bookshop in the Junction, the Book Nook at the county library, the Thirsty Prospector in downtown Sonora, it used to be called Legends, and Mountain Home Gifts, which is also downtown. I think you'll find it enjoyable. It's an easy read. This is a picture of Sonora in January of 1853, after it rebuilt following the disastrous fire of June 1852. And then we just have some pictures on the back to interest people and picture the dome and so on. So anyway, I appreciate being able to have this time. And if you have any questions, I'll, I'll try to answer them. Okay. And would you see that Pat Perry gets that for the, the city historian's library? Good. And as far as Mayor Plummer's copy, could it be held here for him?
Thank you. Thank you, Sharon. And congratulations on this bestseller. Any other public comment from our collected audience here? Okay, we have two people on Zoom. I didn't see when they're, hands went up. But Greg Smith, would you like to unmute yourself and address the council?
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, great. So. All right. Is that better? Okay, so I am the Activities Director at Sonora High School. And we are hoping to do our homecoming parade, which is a tradition that we had for a very long time, pre-COVID. But during the last couple of years, it has gone away. I have spoken to Officer Johnson at the Sonora Police Department. And the only thing we need to have that isn't already in line is the approval of the city council to conduct this event. It's a very short event. The entirety of the parade takes about 20 minutes. We have our marching band. We have some cars that are driving the homecoming court and a couple of our floats and things of that nature. So it's very simple. It begins on School Street in downtown Sonora, right by, you know, pulling off there into North Washington. And then it ends at Bank of America. So it's a very quick thing. But I do need to get approval from all of you. And we will have the event on October 21st, which is a Friday. And the parade route will take off about 1:00 P.M.
The city council cannot take action during public comment, but if you would like to contact our city administrator, she can take care of getting the approval process started, initiated, and, and the council can, and can act on it. I think we have enough time before the 21st. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just, I've called, I've emailed. I just wanted to make sure that I could talk to somebody and you guys knew that it was something we were trying to do. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And good luck with that. All right.
Thank you.
BZ, yeah.
Hi, you so much. I go Wildcats, by the way, Greg. I did want to share with you, first of all, a conversation that I had in a parking lot today with two delightful gentlemen who both happened to be in electric cars. And I mentioned that I also had an electric car. And the thing that was fascinating was this energetic conversation with these two men, both in their probably late 70s, who wanted to know about access to charging stations in our community. They both live here. And obviously are looking for where the available charging points are in our community. I didn't have a lot of information to give them. But I do want to always bring it to your attention that there is an increasing need and that there are more and more electric cars on the roads here in Tualamie County. Every week I see more and more, not only Teslas, one of the gentlemen was driving the electric Mustang and the other gentleman was talking about getting ready to purchase a Polaris. And there were several other conversations about friends of theirs who also were looking in the option of electric cars. So I think that we really need to take a look at where we can go with this and how we can support those people who are moving in that direction, who live in our community. And the other thing I want to just comment real quickly, I really appreciated hearing about the program at Habitat for Humanity. We are longtime donors and have also, like Ms. Cruz, donated lots of things to the Habitat Restore facility. And I just want to remind everybody that the Habitat for Humanity was founded by our 39th president after he left office. And that was Jimmy Carter. He and his wife Rosalynn Carter are the people who started the Habitat program. And Jimmy's getting ready to celebrate his 98th birthday. And I think that he is one of the most admirable former presidents that we have ever been blessed to know. I know he wasn't real popular when he was in office with a lot of people, but you know what? After office, a person can do a lot of really good things to help this country. And Jimmy Carter is a glowing light of that in his life. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to point out that our administration, I believe, is moving ahead with charging stations and, or at least in negotiations. So it is not, the opportunities have not been lost on us. Okay, so I, anyone else have public comment? I just wanted to make a, a short comment from a personal experience yesterday with a downed tree across the city street. And I wanted to commend all of our city services for coming and helping us out and relieving huge anxieties. But the, the police department, Officer Weber was on the dot, on the spot. And then the fire department came and, you know, thank you, thank you. Chief New for all of your talented and, and timely officers who came with a chainsaw. And, and finally, our Public Works Department, who came on Sunday from Valley Springs, no, Balacito, I think, to clean up the, the final mess. So, you know, we are so fortunate in the city to have these services. And, and I just wanted to say that you have a very grateful council member here that, that availed herself to them. So onward, we now have a consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be voted on in one motion unless a council member or a member of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Does anyone on the council have a question or a concern about the items on the consent calendar? Or should I read them out?
It's not necessary to read them out if you choose, ma'am.
All right. Okay. Well, I just wanted to point out that item number five, congratulations on the Assistance to Firefighter Grant in the amount of $23,585.56. Go team. All right. Do I have a motion to? Oh, public comment. Anybody have a public comment? Thank you. None on Zoom. So now I will ask for a motion to Pat, to approve the consent calendar and move on.
I'll move to accept the consent calendar as presented. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mark, are you out there? Thank you. Consent calendar has been approved. Now, let's see. New business. Here are being asked to consider adoption of Resolution 10-03-2022-A, accepting the 2022 Rural Fire Capacity Grant in the amount of $13,980 with a city funds match of $13,380. Chief New, would you like to present this?
Yes, thank you, Pro Tem Mayor and council members, members of the public. So thank you for recognizing the AFG grant. These are two grants, actually, the Rural Fire Capacity and the Assistance to Firefighter, which is termed AFG, that the council approved for us to apply for in early spring of this year. The AFG did have a 5% match, as it said, in the consent calendar, but did not require a resolution. Again, those matching funds are coming from the same location as of the Rural Fire Capacity and have no impact to the general fund. So tonight I'm before you, we, we were successful in writing the 2022 Rural Fire Capacity Grant for a total of $27,960. $13,980 would come from the grant itself with the 50% match as well, which is coming from the Fire Department 730 Fund. That is the fund that we utilize when we go on deployments statewide and out of state when requested. We put those monies back in to help do matching funds for our grants, help with purchasing our, our fire engine in 2019 as well. And so tonight, I'm before you to recommend acceptance of the 2022 Rural Fire Capacity Grant by resolution, designating myself as a city representative to sign the agreement on behalf of the city and of the fire department. And this grant will allow the fire department to purchase wildland safety equipment, structural, personal safety equipment and radio, radio equipment at that 50/50 match with the Department of Forestry and Fire Protection. We've been very successful with this grant for many years. I think we've received it all seven years that I have been here as the fire chief. And so it definitely assists us in keeping our personnel in the most up-to-date and safe wildland and structural equipment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have on the, on the grant.
Questions for Chief New?
Not really a question, just I think it's great that you have that fund available specifically for applying for, for grant money and the fact that you've got seven years running of being successful. It's just commendable.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. Lucky seven. So I'll ask for a motion to consider the adoption of this resolution.
Public comment.
Oh, public comment. That's right. Sorry. You guys, I always leave you out. Sorry. Would anyone like to make a comment? Anyone on Zoom? All right. Now I will ask for a motion.
Oh, I think BZ.
Oh, BZ. Oh, sorry. Very last minute. There you go.
Sorry, sorry. I, I just want to extend personal thanks to the, both the Fire Department and Chief New and, and to all of you and the prior board as well, the prior, the prior city council as well in terms of your rapid response to going out and finding funds that, that can be immediately put to use to help improve fire protection in our city. We all know that it is the most important issue that affects us. And everybody campaigned on that as being their absolute lead point during the last election. And as a former resident of city, of the city and a, and a property owner in the city and somebody who lives probably about a mile as the crow flies from the city limits, I just want you to know how grateful we all are to see this kind of quick action so that we do not become Santa Rosa or Paradise. Thank you. Thank you all.
Any further public comment? All right. Now I'll ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
Well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah. No, it's very exciting. Discuss, next item, we discuss rescinding Resolution 09-19-2022-A, authorizing remote teleconferencing meetings of the city council and its committees and commissions for 30 days pursuant to the Government Code, Section 5295, 3E, Brown Act provisions. Is there someone speaking?
I think BZ needs to, if she can mute her mic.
Doug, are you ready to?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, so thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. What you have before you is kind of a follow-up item to a discussion that we had at our previous council meetings. There's really two, two different components to this. And I think that probably the most important one to lead off with first, just because I think it makes more sense and may impact the decision on the latter, is how you want to treat Zoom for the public. There has been a, a little bit of development since, you know, or right after we, we first talked about this, which is on September 13th, 2022, Governor Newsom signed Assembly Bill 2449. That goes into effect at the beginning of this year and it amends the Brown Act and changes some of the remote participation rules by legislative bodies and public meetings. Under this, new legislative bodies may allow their members to remotely attend public meetings without complying with all of the stuff that they did previously, like the posting requirements and letting people into their private homes or hotel rooms. When there's a quorum that is physically present at the meeting, held in the jurisdiction of the agency, so in this case, Sonora, and the, the public has provided access to attend the meeting remotely. And the member of the body who is unable to attend in person shows just cause or emergency and the member's remote attendance must be available by both audio and visual. So you can't just participate via, like a conference call or telephone technology. So it will require that you participate via Zoom. It's important to note that this change won't, that this change won't be associated with the state of emergency that came out of COVID. This would be a change in the rules that would sunset at the end, in January 1st of 2026. So I think that the legislature is looking for folks to experiment with it, see if it works. And I, I anticipate that it will likely become a fixture with some additional changes that we'll see over time. So what, so, so what does that mean? It means that if the agenda's already been, so if a member of the council is unable to participate, they would, if we know 72 hours in advance, even if we didn't continue the emergency, we could allow Zoom access and then that council member could attend remotely. If it is after the 72 hours, then that council member would not be able to attend until such time as we're able to make it available to the public. So let's say five minutes into the meeting, it becomes available. That council member could then attend five minutes into the meeting. And we have to announce that the, that Zoom participation is allowed, at least for that meeting. And in addition to it, if it's, since it's less than 72 hours, you'd have to state what the emergency is or unforeseen event that prohibited in-person participation. So the Brown Act rules have kind of changed on us a little bit. I think we'll continue to see them evolve over the next couple of years. But it is important to note that you would have to allow public participation through that. Again, for only those events where a council member was going to participate remotely. So with that being said, I think that the first question is whether or not we want to continue to allow the public to participate via Zoom or some other kind of remote conferencing technology as they currently do. And after that question has been answered, then I think the question becomes whether or not the council wants to continue to operate under the emergency effort in the future associated with COVID to be able to allow it to participate remotely as well or using Zoom. Again, these new rules won't go into effect until, until January 1st. So if council does want to allow remote participation of council members, it would be my recommendation that we would continue the conversations for council members until at least the beginning of the year when the new rules take effect. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has. Appreciate it.
Hi there, Doug, it's Suzanne Cruz. Two questions. Number one was if people want to participate in Zoom and ask questions and be involved in our city government in, say, San Francisco, is that something that they, that would be allowed?
Yeah, we cannot prohibit anyone, even if they're in another state or country, from participating in Zoom meetings. So, and the same would be said in person, but obviously there's some geographic restrictions if you're in person versus on Zoom.
Okay, my second question is, can we just rescind what we've got because it was based on COVID and create something else that maybe would be more workable?
So the answer is yes, with the caveat of the council members and the gap in time between October 3rd and January 1st. So if you want to allow remote participation by council members, the only way would be to keep the state of emergency rule in effect through the, through the end of the year. And then the new rules that are enacted by AB 2449 would take over.
Thank you.
Doug, Andy Merrill here. Would it be safe to say that the easiest way to continue the most accessibility for both council members and the general public would just be to continue the measures that we've had in place for the last year plus now?
That's a policy decision you have to make about access and what provides the best access. Obviously, there's, it's eligible for more people if you use it versus in remote technology versus in person. But that's part of the policy decision that you guys have to make.
Okay. Yeah, I just think it's, you know, seeing as we have our mayor participating remotely today just seems to make sense to, you know, if it ain't broke, let's shut up and keep using it. Sort of mentality here in terms of, you know, I don't see why we should get rid of something that's been incredibly beneficial for both the council and the general public at this point.
Well, and this, this would just be, there's a short term between now and January when this all may, may change. So it does seem ridiculous to upend it if it's working right now, but Matt, do you have a?
I, you know, my, my biggest thing, and I said it last time, asking that all this comes back before the council at this, this date, is just that it didn't, it didn't exclude anyone, anybody and didn't include just a few people, and I use the term elitist. And that whole idea is behind, like, you know, what's, what's, what's the term? What's good for thee is good for me, something along those lines. So I didn't want to see us, you know, make something partially okay for us, but then the public couldn't participate or vice versa. So my, my feeling is we keep, we keep it all until the new thing goes through or we get rid of it all until the new thing goes through. So one of those two, so that's just my thinking process. Andy, I agree with you, we've got our mayor who is firefighting, by the way. He's doing his version of firefighting with a chainsaw, just for the public's record, which is extremely important and beneficial, but he's, he's participating via Zoom. So I say we just keep this going, you know, until our, these new laws go into effect.
I'm having a little difficulty with the action here. It just says discuss. Does it want, discuss rescinding? Are we supposed to?
So you, I think what we're looking for tonight would be whether or not we're going to continue to place on the agenda once a month, the emergency that would allow us to, to continue to operate under these, or, or at least what period of time to have this on the agenda before we revisit it. And again, there's two components, and I want to be really clear about this. There's a, there's a component that deals with just the public's access to Zoom, because that is different, y'all are treated more strictly as elected members. So there's the public access and then there is the elected access. And appointed, elected and appointed access, I should say.
My, my opinion is just I'm going to be in support of whatever gives the most people the most accessibility and, and ability to participate. So I think keeping them in the consent calendar, continuing the trend that we've already been, you know, again, months if not years going at this point, I think it makes the most sense personally.
Councilmember Cruz, any further comments? Any public comment?
So I'll speak both on the county Board of Supervising members as well as personally. I think it's really important to facilitate public being able to participate. And whether they come in person, I love in person, but, or remotely. And as well as look at, you know, the activities, you know, amongst the council members themselves. So I would, you know, we're dealing with this on the county perspective. I do know that it comes with a concern sometimes for staffing to be able to manage meetings. And so that becomes a consideration, especially when you get into committees, because it's not necessarily so easy, you know, as a regular council meeting. But anyways, I just want to say that I support any and all means for people to participate. Thanks.
Oh, yeah, thank you. BZ, would you like to make a comment?
Oh, here I am again. I just want to, again, commend the effort that has been made. I hope you will continue to make this effort. A lot of people have been able to attend city council meetings who were not able to attend them in the past. COVID, obviously, but sometimes for personal reasons, people that had a, you know, we've had people attend many times who have spoken about having autoimmune diseases or disabilities that have prevented them from being able to get to the council meetings. And this, this technology and this approach has really opened up a broader opportunity for there to be more participation in this very important part of our democratic process. So I want to thank you. I, I attend a class on Monday evenings faithfully that ends right at 5 o'clock. So there's no way that I could get from my wine dot language class to your meeting in time for public comment, certainly. And I just want to say because of Zoom, I've been able to feel connected and, and, and been given lots of opportunities, I will admit, to express my voice and my opinions to you as my beloved council members. I love the city of Sonora, even though I don't live in the city of Sonora. And to that, I want to just mention that anybody and anybody who has an interest, no matter where they live, should have the right to attend these meetings and participate in them. And, and at the county level, I serve on a committee that I would not be able to get to were it not for the fact that, that that committee still meets on Zoom. So I, I think that, that this, this is one of the gifts of COVID. We've given ourselves the opportunity to discover a really dynamic way that we, the citizens, can be more involved and more connected with our elected representatives and, and the staff that helps serve our city and our county. So thank you.
Do I have a motion to continue with the teleconferencing?
Oh, Mr. Mayor Pro-Tim, I just want to throw out there, my wife sent me a text message and wanted to remind that it's also for someone who is home with kids and can only sometimes keep up with it.
Yeah.
So right now we have all five kids at home, so.
I was going to say, the presentation from Trinity earlier, you know, like there was the gentleman that couldn't leave his house. You know, are we to, to leave him out just because he can't physically make it to the meetings? I don't want to be voting against that. I don't want to be part of a council that doesn't try to be as inclusive as possible, so.
I don't know, I think it's a universal right to be, to participate. So I'm happy to ask for a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Mark, can you unmute yourself if you'd like to vote?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Pass, we will continue with the remote teleconferencing meetings.
And so just from a staff perspective, unless there's a request from a council member, we wouldn't be bringing this item back until then.
Okay, thank you, Doug. City attorney.
Who did the second on that? Mayor Pro-Tim? Who was the second on that?
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, I don't have it anymore. You have it. Or did you put it there? Next is communications, do we have any communications?
You go through the department heads.
Okay, well, communications, the department head reports are after that?
No communications.
Okay, all right, so should I ask each individual one for communications?
Nope, we don't have anything on the agenda under communications, so we can move to council member and department head reports.
All right, department heads, you're on. Rochelle, do you have anything to report tonight? Okay, Chief New?
I just wanted to let everyone know that the 162nd Annual Firefighters Ball is coming up November 5th, and we have tickets finally made and available. So if you are interested in coming, having dinner and a dance, some raffle prizes with us, please contact us at the fire station for tickets. Thank you.
Chief VanderWiel, do you have anything to report tonight?
Just that October is, means breast cancer awareness. So as in previous years, our department is donning our pink badge inserts that, see here. These are one-of-a-kind settings for our badges that we had locally made by a Sonora High School teacher, had a personal connection to the project. And so every year since, it's been about five years now, I think, that we've been wearing them in support of breast cancer awareness and breast cancer research. And so for the honor of wearing the badges, just a reminder that our, our officers will, are asked to donate a minimum amount to, to the cause in which we gather up and we, it's, it's, it's always going to be either a, you know, research or treatment program that the money's donated to.
All right, Mr. Gorsky, do you have anything from the finance department? Okay, council members, you're on the spot, Andy.
I guess I'll go first because I actually have quite a few reports to give. First one would be the Integrated Regional Water Management, Water Advisory Board meeting. There's nothing too huge going on there. We're still trying to figure out how we're going to allocate around a half million dollar grant to increase disadvantaged communities, increase their access to water via building hydration stations, well testing and/or repair of non-functioning wells. I think we kind of established a priority of the, you know, where we want the majority of the funds to go, but I'll have more updates for, after the next meeting. At the Tuolumne County Transit Council and Transit Agency meetings, I could say that Jamestown has a really cool and much-needed crossing that's going to go in, I believe it's at Fifth Street and Highway 108. Essentially, you know, if you would leave Sonora towards Jamestown and make that left at the first traffic light, there's, there's actually not a single crosswalk in Jamestown across Highway 108. So this was, I think, a much-needed project considering we have Jamestown Elementary just, you know, right. It's the street that they're on, so they're going to be getting, I think, approximately like, like a quarter mile of total, maybe even more of total sidewalks put in, high-visibility crossings. And it'll hopefully lead a lot of people down these beautiful sidewalks to Historic Railtown, which I think is, is really cool. That was the big, kind of the big agenda item that we voted on at that meeting. I also filled in for our mayor, Mark Plummer, at the Cable Access 8 Tuolumne Board Meeting. Really, a couple of things to talk about there. It seems the conversation with Supervisor Ryan Campbell is doing really well. And they're looking at totally rebuilding a more professional-looking set, more inviting to have more guests and stuff on. Basically, increase the production values of that program, which I have been a guest on. I think it's a really great forum for people to, you know, tune in and find out about people that are passionate about current events in Tuolumne County. And secondly, I learned that Cable Access Tuolumne has the license for four separate channels. We currently have, you know, Channel 8 as our, as our main hub for everything, but it was brought to my attention that apparently they're looking at starting a second channel that's solely education programming. And it's kind of going to be centered around this one program that I thought was really amazing called Do the Math. It's put on by the Kern County Education Department or some sort of department in Kern County that's funded through a bunch of different various local agencies throughout the state. And basically on, I think it's Tuesdays and Thursdays from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., if you are a student in a math class, you can call an 800 number toll-free and present them your math problem that you're having trouble with, and they will help you solve that, you know, help you do your homework live on air with everyone else that tunes in, which I think it could be a great resource for, for anyone in, in math classes. And yeah, so most of the other educational programming is going to be built around that. And we even discussed the possibility of producing local historical kind of little docu-series highlighting cool, you know, state parks in the area or, you know, points of interest and stuff. So I think there could be a lot of really interesting developments with our local public access TV. Oh, and before I forget, I also attended the Orange Shirt Day demonstration that was in our Courthouse Park on Friday. And it was some really moving stuff. You know, I really don't want to speak too much about it because I could never even come close to conveying the, some of the stories and sentiments that were shared that day. I just bring it up because, you know, there's a, oftentimes, our Native American communities are really, you know, kind of swept aside. And not to point out this book, but I looked in the glossary, I flipped through it. I think there's two pages dedicated to Native American history. And we're talking about, you know, 17th, 18th, you know, 19th century history. And I know that there, there's a lot of history to be, to be found there. So I learned a lot personally about my local culture and things that I didn't necessarily learn in, you know, public education. But if you're not familiar with the movement, I just say, check out all the material they have online because they could do a much better job of explaining it than I ever could. But fantastic event, really eye-opening.
I hope it was well-attended.
Yeah, oh yeah, it was a great turnout. Very, it's difficult to talk about, and I recognize that, you know, some of the topics, but it was, it was a very respectful, enjoyable environment that, that evening. I think a lot of positive. enjoyable environment that, that evening. I think a lot of positive outcomes came, came out of that, so.
And we can thank our BZ Smith for organizing it. Suzanne, you have?
I've pretty much recapped all of my committee meetings the last time around, but I will reiterate this new website that's come together called uniteus.com, where you can find all social services help in one place rather than a million brochures scattered all over the county. So if you need rental assistance, help with utilities, food, anything you can think of, you can go to www.uniteus.com. And then finally, I put on a massive Reagan Dinner where many business owners showed up. That was September seventeenth, Constitution Day, Judge Laura Krieg, and of course, our beloved Congressman Tom McClintock. So, thanks.
Councilmember Hawkins, would you like to expound on your activities?
Yes. I, you know, I too attended the Reagan Dinner and got to talk to Congressman McClintock for a little bit. Pretty cool being able to advocate for Sonora, and he does take it back to Washington. But, you know, I, I guess I'll, I'll say this, and this goes to our District One Supervisor. You know, the last couple of years have been great working with you. I know working with our county board has been really good. That's what gave us our whole system in here. What we're looking at right now was through collaboration and just honest-to-goodness workability between the two boards. I'm looking forward to our future together. So as we continue to move forward, you know, Dave, I'll be bugging you more, but, you know, I really appreciate your willingness to listen, your willingness to take phone calls even when you're really busy. And I just, I really look forward to our cooperation together. So, and then just for the council's knowledge, public knowledge, and Doug, Doug is on here, of course, he's listening. It's been six years since I tried to come home and could not, and ended up homeless almost overnight through bad, false accusations, and continue to fight and fight and fight, and I'm in a lot better spot now. So there are a lot of people, even in this room, that really helped support me then, and our, our city attorney was one of those. So I, I can never thank everyone enough, the people that were there for me. So I'll talk about it more in the future, but it, it's kind of a wild and crazy story that I've somewhat elaborated on occasionally. So that is all.
Okay, quite the anniversary. Mark, would you like to say anything from afar?
Nothing, thank you.
Well, thank you for joining us and making the effort. Busy finger here. I also attended the Water Advisory Committee, and just to add a little to Andy's report, I did ask about grants, and the city of Sonora is, can apply for grants, both for cleaning our, our creek and for stormwater grants. So hopefully in the future, we can take advantage of some of the, of the grant opportunities that go through the Water Advisory Committee and the T-Stan Irwin Program. And then I just, in a, a moment of passion today, I made this little statement that I'd like to read. I was reading a statewide coverage in the New York Times this morning, and was struck by a metaphor for governing used by a former governor. Elected officials, especially in nonpartisan positions, usually find themselves hewing to the path that this former governor compared to canoeing, paddle a little to the left and then a little to the right. Your Sonora City Council members approach city issues from different personal and political perspectives, but we are united in our commitment to building and maintaining a well-managed, viable, sustainable, and thriving city. To that end, we have authorized our administration to put Measure Y on the November ballot. If passed, this sales tax initiative will halt and hopefully reverse an untenable fiscal situation that puts ongoing delivery of our city services, police, fire, and public works at risk. As your elected officials, your council members stand ready to meet with any and all residents who would like to find out more about the ballot measure and why its passage is critical to Sonora's future. Our phone numbers are posted on the city's website, and we look forward to hearing from our residents. So vote yes on Y. Thank you. So if there's no other comment or needing business, we will adjourn at six eighteen.